Dean, if we have all of our necessary parts here, I'll call to order this meeting of the Salina City Planning Commission for October 2nd. Our first agenda item is presentation of the 2012 landscaping awards. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. October each year is National Planning, Community Planning Month. It's also the best time of the year for reseeding lawns and repairing landscape or replacing landscape that may have died during the heat of the summer months. And so each year, the first meeting of October, we have a Planning Commission and Tree Advisory Board Awards of Excellence. And we've identified three projects this year. First of all, I want to introduce Jerry Holtz. He's the Chair of the Tree Advisory Board.
Jerry?
And also Steve Blue is the City Forester. And this is a joint effort between that board and the Planning Commission. And each year, there is a special award that is created called the Golden Leaf Award that the Tree Advisory Board gives to an outstanding project. And this year, the Heritage at Hawthorne Village Apartments has been selected for that. And just to give you a little bit of background on that, the Hawthorne Elementary School closed in 2001, and it was identified and put into a list of surplus properties that the school district had, and they solicited proposals for reuse of the building. And it was purchased in October 2006 by Midwest East Services, and they occupied that as tenants until 2008, at which time, the lack of tenants and operating costs caused them to vacate the property. Property was then purchased by Overland Property Group of Overland Park. They also did the Reserves at Prairie Glen Project out on South Ohio, across from Jerry Ivy Park. They submitted an application for low and moderate income housing tax credits to finance a housing project here. And in their review of the existing school building, they found that it was not of a layout or type of construction that was conducive to reuse like what was done at Roosevelt Lincoln. And so there was a proposal to demolish the existing school building, which was built in 1912. That went to the Heritage Commission, ultimately the City Commission. And the demolition request was approved with the stipulation and guidelines of what got built back. And so what we have here is two buildings. They're two-story each. These contain 16 apartment units, and they were redeveloped with off-street parking and with a clubhouse, which John has a photo there on the left-hand side. That's what it looks like from the front, where they incorporated the original entry arch from the school into that. Obviously, we're here to talk about landscaping, and we want to point out a couple things that were done. First of all, they retained a number of mature trees along North Knight Street and also on the remainder of the site. So this is the view along Knight Street. They did landscaping around the base of the buildings. And then, in our comprehensive plan, we talked about the difference between urban and suburban type development. And this would be an example of what we would consider urban-type development, because I think, John, if you could go back to the streetscape picture, one thing that's notable here is you're not seeing any parking spaces between the sidewalk or the front street and the front of the building. The parking is around the rear. And so that is something that's certainly notable about that, and that is something that the comprehensive plan encourages as far as the streetscape. And this is a gateway into downtown from I-70. So the principals involved in this project were the Overland Property Group, and I believe we have Pat Beatty here representing them. And they are the owners and developers of the project. And Steve's got a special plaque here. Pat, if you want to come forward, we'd like to present that to you. This is the Golden Leaf Award, which goes to the outstanding project of the year. Also, we want to recognize Jones Gillan Rens Architects. We're the architects and designers of this and Earth Care Services, led up by Dan Fiorello, who did the landscape design and the installation here. And we've got plaques for them, but I don't know if anybody here is representing Jones Gillan Rens here. So we'll make sure that we get those to them. Our next nomination is in the category of voluntary landscape improvements. And this is the Sunflower Bank Ranch there at 176 North Santa Fe. And in our downtown area, in C-4 District, there's no requirement in the landscaping regulations for front yard landscaping. And so all this work was done on a voluntary basis by Sunflower Bank. This particular facility was built as First National Bank and Trust back in 1975. And in 2011, Sunflower Bank decided that the existing landscaping had become dated and overgrown, and so they came up with a plan to redo it. And they repaired their lawn sprinkler system, which had not been used in eight years, and they reworked the irrigation system. They removed a bunch of -- there were junipers and some pine there that was getting kind of overgrown, and removed a lot of that, and they created a grassy front yard and also used landscape rock along Ash. And so they've added ornamental trees and a number of flowering plants. And they indicate that they've received a lot of favorable comments from the public about how the new landscaping complements the downtown area and the streetscape. The other thing that I particularly noted with the sculpture tour of Salina and the sculptures put there along North Santa Fe, the removal of the vegetation, the substitution of the turf grass there has really made a nice backdrop for the sculpture that's located there. As far as this particular project, Gary Arpin with Total Turf Care was a designer and contractor. Sarah Benoit is the branch manager there, and Cheryl Campbell involved in their retail sales. They're the ones that really spearheaded the project. And so, given the fact that this was voluntary and has really enhanced the downtown area, this was a project that was identified as being worthy of recognition. So if we have somebody from Sunflower Bank here, we've got a plaque for them. We've got Cheryl Campbell. Is that Sarah?
Yes.
So we've got Sarah Benoit and Cheryl Campbell. Thank you very much. Did you see Mr. Arpin here or anybody here from Total Turf Care? If not, we'll make sure that they get their plaque. And then the third award that we have is back to the Administration Building at Kansas Wesleyan. And this is part of an ongoing campus upgrade that started back when Marshall Stanton was the President there of Kansas Wesleyan University. And it really got off the ground when the new Student Activities Center was constructed there at the corner of Fourth and Claflin. As part of that particular project, there was some front yard landscaping required just for that particular area. But Kansas Wesleyan went far beyond that, and I think the one that's most notable is the work that was done in front of the main Administration Building. And so when they got done with the Student Activities Center, they changed the entire entrance into the campus, which used to be a circular driveway. And that got removed. And they have the brick paved concourse there, and they have a fountain there in front of the main building there that greets people as they come to the Administration Building. Also, they've got the monument signs out front that were designed by Jones Gillan Rens. And so the people that we want to recognize here would be all those involved with Kansas Wesleyan University. Stone features of the pond were constructed by Roman Fountains out of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Deal Construction was the excavation contractor. Bob Brown designed the landscape plantings, but far and away, the most of the work was done by the physical property staff there at Kansas Wesleyan University. I know we have Darrell Victory here from Kansas Wesleyan. And so if you want to come forward, we'd like to recognize the work that Kansas Wesleyan did there. Bob Brown, if you want to come forward. Steve's got a plaque for you. Bob was involved in the installation of the plantings and selection of this. Again, we want to thank all of these property owners involved. Everything that's been done here has helped beautify the built environment in Salina, which is something that the comprehensive plan is striving towards. And we thank the members of the Tree Advisory Board for their assistance with this. We'll take a brief pause here and then go to our regular agenda.
While we're taking a moment, I'd like to recognize Trent Brown as our new youth member to the Planning Commission. Trent, if you'd stand up, and we commissioners can see who you are as well as everyone that's here with us today. Trent's a student at Salina Central, and we're really pleased to have him here on the Commission with us. I don't know if you got the whole agenda today, Trent, but this is good stuff. You've got a lot to learn. And you'll enjoy your time with us. Thank you very much. And Dean, I don't know if you have any remarks for him from the planning board?
No, I got a chance to meet Trent ahead of time, and he's met Justin, says he's ready to go, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And we're ready to consider minutes, and then we'll give you an update on item three.
All righty. Approval of the summary minutes for September 18th. Is there any comment or a motion to approve? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most of the minutes are approved. Public hearing items, we begin with number three. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item was scheduled at your last meeting at September the 18th, was an advertised public hearing. Mr. Ostrander was here but left before this item came before you. And under your bylaws, you can't act on an item unless the applicant is physically present to answer questions. And so this item was carried over by you to October 2nd. We have it back here on your agenda this afternoon. We met with Mr. Ostrander, and in light of the neighborhood and staff opposition, he has decided to withdraw his application. And so the remedy that staff will pursue is removal of all the work that had been done on the first level of this workshop building and get it restored back to its original condition, which was a workshop below and a historical accessory apartment above. So with that item being withdrawn, if there was anyone here who was here to speak on the South College application, we'd want to let everybody know that the application's withdrawn, and that would be case closed.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, then. We'll move on to item number four, application Z-12-21, requesting the rezoning of USD Number 305's administrative offices. It's connected with all of the -- up to item number 17. Ken, I believe you want to sit down on these items.
What I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is a preface. I would refer everyone, the commissioners, to what's identified as a cover report in your packets. And in the first five or so pages, we just cover the ground as to the background of how we arrived here today. And I'm going to focus on page six onward. And just by way of background, I would indicate two things. Part of the genesis for this is the Planning Commission identified this as a comprehensive plan implementation item that it wished to move forward with. And so that was part of the genesis for that. The other thing that I would point out is that this is not unprecedented or uncharted water for the Planning Commission or the city of Salina. There have been other cases, most recently the creation of a new hospital medical zoning district, where a new zoning district was created, and then the Planning Commission initiated the remapping of that. And the South Santa Fe Campus of the Salina Regional Health Center is now zoned Hospital Medical District today. And so we have replicated or attempted to follow the same process that was used when the Hospital Medical District was created in the zoning ordinance and then mapped on the city of Salina zoning map. I would refer you to page six of the report. And we reported to you at your August 21st meeting that there had been questions raised about the procedural aspects of how we got to the June public hearing. And the staff concurred that there were irregularities as to the process that was followed. And the recommendation to the Planning Commission at the 21st was that we reported back on the procedural errors that we had identified. We recommended that you formally withdraw the earlier application. And a motion was made by you on the 21st to withdraw that application to authorize staff to initiate new applications, plural, requesting an amendment of the zoning map of the city for the purposes of mapping the new public use educational facilities zoning classification on 14 public school properties. And so after that, there were -- new applications were initiated on your behalf on August 31st, 2012. And according to the calendar, a new public hearing was set for October 2nd, 2012. There was mailed notice of the individual applications, and a public hearing date was published in the Salina Journal. There were signs posted on all 14 individual USD 305 properties, and mailed notice was sent to all owners of property located within 200 feet of each school. Also attached to the map and the notice was an attachment of the public use zoning district as it related to the Educational Facilities Subdistrict. And what we determined was that what had been attached there and what was actually adopted and published, transposed, intended items four, five, and six, which deal with accessory uses, signs, and off-street parking, and loading. And those had inadvertently ended up in the conditional use section instead of the permitted use section. And that is a typographical error, but it needs to be fixed, and we have proposed a process for doing that. One of the things that we wanted to point out to you as far as the intent or the pattern in the zoning ordinance is we have 21 different zoning districts in the city of Salina, and in 20 of them, accessory buildings, signs, and off-street parking are listed as permitted uses. They were intended to be listed as permitted uses in the Educational Facility subsection. And as a matter of fact, in the Public Facility subsection and the Exposition Facility subsection, they are. But the fact of the matter is that they are not listed that way in the published and adopted ordinance. So we are in agreement that the three accessory uses in the mailed attachment could potentially mislead the recipients and give them false assurances that a conditional use permit application in public hearing would be required to install a sign. It has not been historically. It's not today in any residential district. We don't even have a provision in our sign code for doing it by conditional use permit. But nonetheless, that's where it ended up. The other thing I would point out is that there are currently 10 schools: South High, Central High, South Middle School, Coronado Elementary, Hughesner Elementary, Meadow Park Elementary, Shilling Elementary, Stewart Elementary, Sunset, the former Kennedy School, now the Heartland Early Education Center. They were built before 1977. And because of that, no conditional use permits were applied for or approved or required because at the time they were built, they were permitted uses. And when the current zoning ordinance was adopted, the new schools were moved to conditional use category, but existing schools have remained classified as permitted uses. And so in the case of those 10 schools, they are permitted uses today. The other thing we'd point out is that in 1999, if most of you are quite familiar, voters passed a $100 million school bond issue, and millions of dollars of renovations and new construction took place on these school properties. And because the 10 schools that identified they were permitted uses, there was no public notice, no public hearings were held on those proposed improvements. And so a zoning change from residential to public use would not change the status of those schools at all. They're permitted uses today. They would be permitted uses if this is approved. The only difference is that the public use zoning regulations would apply to their projects instead of the single-family residential that we're trying to apply today. And so this is an advertised public hearing, and our recommendation is to open a public hearing on each application individually and receive public input on each individual school site individually. But before we move to that point, we want to identify two alternatives that you have. And alternative one is the one that you will see identified as a staff recommendation that we have attached to all the individual reports. And that option would be to allow the remapping process to continue forward. The Planning Commission could continue this public hearing on those individual applications to your December 4th meeting. And then we would request that you initiate and schedule a public hearing on, and then forward to the City Commission, your recommendation as to a corrective text amendment correcting the list of permitted and conditional uses in the public use educational facilities subsection. And we have attached a calendar that's in your packet. I've also placed it individually at your place, just so it's easier to pull out for reference. But it's a loose sheet that looks like this. And so if you look at where we are there, today is October 2nd, 2012, and we're having a public hearing. And we're suggesting that if you look at the line subsequent to that, that we're suggesting that the end of this hearing held today, that you initiate a corrective text amendment to fix the three uses that were misplaced. We would do a notice in the Salina Journal. You would have an advertised public hearing on November 6th, where public input would be welcomed. That would go to the Salina City Commission as a corrective text amendment. They would finish their action on that, and if they adopted the corrective text amendment, or even if they did not, you would know that and have that answer when the public hearing was reopened on December 4th, 2012. So the summary is that we recommend, if you go that direction, that you take the input today, but take no action or make no formal recommendations on any of the schools. The other option is, if you think this process that we've outlined here, or how we've arrived at today, that the procedure followed is invalid, and we should -- you have no jurisdiction to be here today, then the correct action would be to withdraw applications 12-8 through 12-21 and close that out again, and then initiate the text amendment. And then sometime in the future, we could start up the remapping again. But alternative one is what you would follow if you believe that the process set up and followed to date is valid, and this calendar that we've outlined to you to fix that is valid. John, I don't know if you can find under the ordinances the original ordinance draft. And just so, we're going to have to go to the next pages, John. Okay, right there. This is screwed up. It's one line. This is what staff prepared for your consideration. The idea was that you had recommended that these three items be permitted uses: administrative offices, elementary and intermediate schools, and secondary schools, which would cover USD 305's offices and what they have at Hegeman Elementary and their early education programs. And our middle and elementary schools would be covered by this, and South and Central would be covered by this. And then this is just boilerplate language that we have in all of our zoning districts. And these are the five items that you recommended be and remain as conditional uses. And so that's what we had prepared for your consideration. If you could go to the next one, John, which is the R-1 district. I just want to show you this because if you live across the street from Stewart Elementary School, and Stewart Elementary School is zoned R-1 today, this is what you will see that at Stewart Elementary School, they can put up accessory buildings, they can put up signs as permitted by this chapter in their sign permit, and they can have off-street parking and loading on their property. And there was no intent on anybody's part to do anything but to take these items and include them under the Educational Facilities permitted use section. So if you exit out of that, John, we'll go to the third one. This is what the City Commission adopted as far as the language, and this is what was attached to the notice that went out to property owners who received letters close to the schools. And what you'll see here is that instead of six items here, you can keep scrolling, John. What happened is that these inadvertently got inserted down here instead of up there. But that is the way that the ordinance got adopted and published, and so that's the way the ordinance stands today. And that is what we're proposing to fix through a corrective text amendment. So again, if you look at page seven of your report, alternative number one allows the remapping process to continue moving forward. remapping process to continue moving forward, and it would involve hearing public input today, but continuing the public hearing from today till December 4th, to allow the corrective text amendment action to take place, and then reconvening the public hearing on December the 4th. Alternative two is be, if you think that that's not a valid process to follow, then what should happen is that we wouldn't move forward with these applications for remapping today, but would rather halt that process and then initiate the corrective text amendment, allow that to run its course, and then come back later with a third attempt to remap or rezone the properties. And again, it is this revised calendar that you have in front of you that we're proposing to follow.
So, the three items were actually put in, being put in the conditional use that's more restrictive?
Yes. What that would mean is that if we didn't correct it, then say, for instance, at Stewart School, today, with R1 zoning, they could apply for a sign permit, build parking, get a building permit to put a shed on the school property with no notice or public hearings. But if we rezoned it to public use, and we didn't fix this language, then they would have to get a conditional use permit to put in a sign, put up a shed, or build parking. And that was not anybody's intent, but that's what happened, and that's what needs to be corrected.
Well, I regret that the fix was needed, but certainly glad it was found. I don't believe in spanking, and you know, if you're painting your house, and you forget to put the brush away, and the next day, if you can't use that brush, you don't start painting the house over again. I think we need to keep this moving forward. Everything that we've done in the last year and a half, we've voted unanimously for a classification.
What we would suggest first is I'll refer over to Mr. Bankston and see if I've left anything unstated about the calendar, and then before we enter into any individualized discussion of particular properties, we would want to open it up to any public input as to the validity of the process that we have outlined. But I'll turn that over to Mr. Bankston and see if I've left anything out.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the only thing I would note that might be relevant as you look at this calendar, and as we anticipate the option of continuing the public hearing and resuming the consideration of the rezoning application at a later date, there would be an additional mailed and published notice of that subsequent public hearing. Not necessarily mandated by law, but as we get into the whole set of circumstances, it was certainly our recommendation that that follow-up notice be made so that it's abundantly clear to everyone involved that the matter would be back before you, and ultimately the city commission, on that deferred basis. As Mr. Andrew indicated, I think there may be some discussion about the validity of the option that you see outlined there. I'll be happy to address any points that come up with regard to that, and hopefully help in that way.
Okay. So, this, as opposed to being a public hearing on the Glenifer Hill property itself, this should be considered a public hearing on the process that we have outlined, and chairman should open it up for any public comment on the process that we have outlined for correcting this.
Gentlemen, any questions of the staff?
Then I will open it up for public comment on the process that staff is recommending to us. If there's those that'd like to address the commission on this alternative number one, we're going to continue the public hearing process both now and at the future meetings, and we'll also do follow-up notice. I regret that there were errors made in the past, but I think staff's done the appropriate things, and Mr. Bankston has reviewed them, the things that are necessary to keep this item, these items on track. The idea behind the public facility seems to be a good one. Everybody's been in favor of it all through the process. I think we just fix the process and move on. As I say, if you're painting the house, the brush goes bad, you don't stop painting the house, you keep moving forward, and you get a new brush. So, I think staff's done the necessary things to keep this project moving forward. The lectern is open if anybody wants to come forward. Yeah?
My name is Sandra Hernandez. I live at 1940 Starlight Drive. And yes, this process has been very flawed from beginning, and I'm not quite understanding how you could withdraw the application without sending it forward to the city commission. But as far as what they're talking about in stopping the process, it just depends on, I guess, a viewpoint of, is the process still flawed? I would say that yes, it is. And the reason why is because I believe, if I'm not incorrect, that the ordinance was codified in the code book, which makes it legal. And as far as doing a text amendment, is that a legal process for just changing what has been codified and making the ordinance legal in the book itself? I guess this would be addressing me, Mr. Bankston.
Glad to respond if that's your wish. There's no question, but what that code section, as was included in the mailing, is current local law. It is in effect, and that's exactly why, when that was recognized, that there were two ways the matter could have gone. You could say, "Well, we see that's a problem, but we don't want to go there now because it sure will cause a problem in relation to the rezoning application, and we'll just change it later," or at least deal with it later. I suppose that would have been lawfully correct, but it certainly seems terribly disingenuous in a position that staff did not want to put the planning commission in, the city commission in, or any citizens in that situation, where we would know that we, or at least in the minds of those decision-makers, there was the potential for that subsequent change and potentially misrepresent the matter to anyone who might be interested. That's what caused everything to stop and say, "How do we most appropriately address the problem that has now been identified?" So, and I hope this is helpful, there are two processes involved here. As you all may know, the rezoning process is a quasi-judicial process, where you are applying existing law to a particular circumstance. The rezoning process. The discovery of the problem with the text raises what is addressed with a legislative process. In other words, we are looking to potentially amend the code in order to correct the problem. We can't just say, "Oh, we made a mistake, so have the clerk change it." It requires going through the full process, consideration by the planning commission, recommendation by the planning commission to the city commission, and an ultimate decision on their part. That's what we felt like we had to say, we have to stop the quasi-judicial process on the rezoning applications in order for that legislative process to be completed in the normal course. Everything that goes into that process completed independently of the zoning, of the rezoning process. And that's what this plan provides for. There's no attempt to shortcut that in any way. It's the full process. It just happens to be occurring in the midst of the rezoning process. Did that answer your question?
Possibly. Clarification is that it was put in code book incorrectly, so it legally states that those are conditional uses. Is that correct?
Yes, it does.
Underneath public use.
And when we say incorrectly, I think everyone recognizes that now.
Right.
Obviously didn't when it occurred. And I would characterize it as a corrective measure. The outcome would seem relatively predictable in terms of making the correction to be consistent with all, as Mr. Andrew pointed out, all other aspects of the code in the way that these particular matters are addressed throughout the code. But it still takes this body's recommendation, the city commission's ultimate decision, in order to properly correct it.
And what you're saying is that it can be done in conjunction with the rezoning process continuing as it is?
Well, it's not continuing as it is. It's coming to a screeching halt long enough for that process to occur. When that process has occurred, and we know what the final text looks like, that's when we resume so that everybody knows exactly what are the permitted uses, and exactly what are the conditional uses, and so that when this, the continued, the continuation of today's hearing resumes in, I believe, December, we'll be able to have this conversation on the basis of the presumably corrected text.
And letters are going to be sent out for the third time? How did you deal with this rezoning process with the corrected, I guess, verbiage from the public use, conditional and permitted uses?
Short answer, yes. That certainly was my recommendation, and I think that was certainly staff's thought as well, that that would be beneficial for anyone who might be interested. The other quick point, interestingly enough, it is not required to include that code language in the notice. That was supplemental information to provide property owners just with that much more information about the situation, which I guess is all the more fortuitous because it may have gone unnoticed until sometime later that the problem existed. So, it was not mandatory that it be included, but fortunately, it was the basis for identifying the problem.
Are you speaking of the enclosure that was included with the letter?
Right. The enclosure that included the code language that articulates which are the permitted and which are the conditional uses.
But there was also very specific instructions on how to get to the long list of public and permitted use, I mean, I'm sorry, permitted and conditional uses in that letter as well. And even if you didn't include the enclosure, people that went online to look at those permitted and conditional uses would have seen exactly what is, you're trying, that you want to move forward and correcting. So, if I'm understanding correctly, if no one took a look at the enclosure, this would have just been moved forward as it is, and they would have had to stay with the ordinance because there was no text amendment to it. Is that correct?
Several questions in there, I think, but I'll... At whatever point in time, the incorrect, or presumed incorrect characterization of those three uses would have been discovered, I would anticipate that we would have done whatever was necessary to correct that. My only point was, I think it's fortunate that it was discovered when it was, so that we could deal with it, so that anybody that had an interest in the rezoning would have the benefit of that being addressed prior to the full consideration of the rezoning, rather than us learning of it later.
I can appreciate what you're saying. I am not very familiar with the process as far as text amendments and correcting things like that, but I still want to, I still want to address why this did not go on to the city commission when the Z12-2 was passed. The application was passed unanimously here by the city planning commission, but yet there was an application for withdrawal, and the procedure is to send it on. If it's passed by the city planning commission, the procedure is to send it on to the city commission to either approve it or deny it, or to return it. Because had it gone, that process, we wouldn't be here right now because there would have been a six-month stay, had the city commission denied it, and they would have had to deny it based on all the errors.
Well, you've made a lot of assumptions there, that are many of which are incorrect.
Okay.
The, you're now referring back to the initial applications, just so everybody's clear. Not the applications pending presently, but the first application. Am I correct?
Well, I'm referring to that because the applications would not have even been processed had there not been a withdrawal of the original application.
I understand why you're referring to it. I just want to make sure that everybody understands. We're not talking about the pending application. We are talking about the first application, the one that was withdrawn some...
August 21st.
Some time ago now. There were problems, and when the problems were recognized, the planning commission took its action to withdraw the application.
But the application had been passed.
That's what you have the problem with.
Well, I hear the problem with the application had been passed. It was not withdrawn. They are now, they've gone through the process of withdrawing a past application that should have gone on to the city commission.
So, to fulfill your objective that it would have been deferred for six months?
No. Sorry to say that that is the process that this entity does, involving the process. If there's an application that passed, it's supposed to go into the city commission, and it did not. Instead, there was an application for withdrawal, and based on that withdrawal, then they came up with 14 new applications for the rezoning. So, what I'm saying, what I'm asking is, in the procedural process, which this is what we're addressing, should that have not gone on to the city commission based on it had been passed by the planning commission?
I can address that partially, Mr. Bankston. The applicant in this case was the Salina City Planning Commission. Therefore, the applications were under their control. And any applicant, including Mr. Ostrander earlier this afternoon, has it within their control to withdraw their applications. And once it was identified and reported back to the planning commission that we had identified procedural errors, in getting to that public hearing and recommendation on the 19th, there was no alternative for the planning commission but to withdraw.
You referenced Mr. Ostrander, whenever he, and I apologize if I'm saying the name incorrectly, when he withdrew his, was he withdrawing something that had been passed?
No, he withdrew it before today's meeting. But we have had applications that have been recommended for approval by the planning commission, and because of changing circumstances, the applicant has withdrawn the application before it got to the city commission.
And had it not been a city commission... And had it not been a City Commission or the Planning Commission that was the applicant, what would have been the outcome?
Depends on who the applicant was and what they chose to do. If the applicant had been USD 305 and USD 305 had been advised of the procedural difficulties, then it would have been their prerogative to choose to withdraw the application and start over and do it correctly.
And that is what I'm proposing to this Planning Commission at this time. I understand your, your analogy about the paintbrush, but I think that there's been way too many errors in addition to this one that has been refound and I, I think the process should be halted. And I would hope that the City Commission, I mean, excuse me, the Planning Commission would look further into it to, to realize that there has been so many errors and there's been a continued process, apparently a speedy process, that errors are still found. So I hope that the end result is that you, you do halt this and that there's more time that is taken to do this right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I appreciate Mr. Andrew's point, but Mrs. Hernandez, if I may complete my response, I mentioned that I thought there was an assumption that you were making incorrectly and I owe you an explanation for that. As Mr. Andrew has explained, certainly the applicant has the prerogative to withdraw the application. In this case, however, had the matter advanced to the City Commission, it certainly would have been my recommendation that it would have come back to the Planning Commission or whatever was necessary to correct any notification problems or any other problems that might have existed. Our intent is to assure the integrity of the process, not, my point is, it would not have inherently advanced to the City Commission with the only solution being denial. At least my recommendation. I don't know what the City Commission, can't say exactly what the City Commission would have done, but certainly my recommendation would be to have returned it and initiated whatever process was necessary to correct any deficiencies rather than mandate that it be disapproved.
I thank you for that response.
Other comments? Anyone else like to address the commission?
I think it would be helpful here again to refer back to page seven and to look at the two alternate paths that you have there. If you are persuaded that the process that we have embarked on and that we've outlined for you on this revised calendar is a valid process, then what we should do is proceed on and have an individual public hearing on each of the individual school sites this afternoon and at the conclusion of that, continue the public hearing to December 4th, 2012, and then to initiate the corrective text amendment following this schedule. If you are of the belief that the process that we are proposing to follow to correct that is, is not valid, then the remapping process should be halted and those applications similarly withdrawn as the initial application was and then you should authorize us to initiate the text amendment. But if you are in agreement that we should call timeout to the mapping process, correct the text in the ordinance and then resume the remapping process, then under alternative one, we would move on to the public hearing on the first item, which is the USD 305 administrative offices. So I'll let you reflect on that and address any additional questions you have of Mr. Bankston. And then if you are in agreement with alternative number one, then we would proceed forward with these individual public hearings.
Gentlemen, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, may I elaborate just one point in participating in that recommendation? Again, the, certainly either approach is fine and obviously we'll carry out whichever is your preference. Can certainly understand why the matter, because of, of dealing with the issues presented to an adjoining property owner, could very well be confusing. And this recommendation seemed to accomplish what we're, what we're always primarily concerned about, particularly in these quasi judicial processes, because the due process elements attached to that process were always concerned about notice and opportunity to be heard. The reason we felt it was important to proceed with your public hearing today was that notification went out, that there was going to be a public hearing on the rezoning applications today. Mail notice went out to that effect, published notice went out to that effect. Regardless of who the application, applicant might be, my advice will always be have that public hearing. Don't try to unring that bell. Just allow anybody who might appear the opportunity to appear and to hear what the circumstances are. That is why we thought it best for you to go ahead and at least convene your public hearing today and go forward as you, as you see fit. We can understand why it might be somewhat confusing and a little bit difficult for anyone to present meaningful comment on the matter until the text matter is resolved. But the point of today's proceeding was to have that public hearing that has been noticed up and so that anybody that was interested and appeared today would have the full story as to what is happening going forward. Likewise, we called a timeout, we go through the text amendment process, we then resume the continuation of today's hearing on the rezoning applications, not only with the continuation of today's hearing, but with subsequent notice so that anyone that wouldn't be aware of today's proceedings would hopefully have the benefit of, of the subsequent notice as well. So that's why it seemed to us that both matters are sufficiently related, but to hopefully deal with the issues that are now before you in a logical sequence, but to recognize that there is sufficient interrelationship between the two, that we wanted everyone who had any interest in this matter to always have throughout this process, notice and an opportunity to be heard. So that was the thinking behind the recommendation.
I appreciate those remarks. I'm, as chairman, I'm very comfortable that we provided both of those items, notice and, and the opportunity to, for the public to speak. Gentlemen, I'm comfortable with alternative number one. How does, how the rest of you feel?
I'm, I'm the same way. I, I think this, this zoning change is, is a prudent one. It follows our comprehensive plan that we spent a lot of time on and a lot of discussion on. I think the, the mistakes that were made were, were just that. They were mistakes. They happened. We've had text amendments before. We're doing the correct process to correct them. I don't think it's worth throwing the whole thing in the trash can and starting over. I think that we need to go with option number one and, and move ahead.
I appreciate Mrs. Hernandez's concern about the process. So it's a good concern. I think we've corrected it. I think we've done the best we can to, to notify the public and we've done everything correctly from that point forward. I, I, I hear her talk about the, the process, but nobody, nobody spoke about any of the concerns about, about any of the changes in the text amendment. I, I think we've done the right thing by correcting this. So I would have to agree, we have to go with alternative one and just move forward with the process.
And I would just say a thank you to Mrs. Hernandez because your interest in this matter has improved the process. I don't see anything wrong with the, the signage that we're putting out on every property now and that was something that was apparently being overlooked before. So we're glad you're engaged in, in all of this. Well, with the consensus of the, of the commission in favor of approaching this as staff has recommended to us, using alternative one, we will.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I suppose for the record, it would be best if a vote was taken on the alternatives.
Not a problem. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We move ahead with staff's recommendation, alternative number one on application Z-12-8 through Z-12-21.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that will be recorded as unanimous.
So with that, we should open the specific public hearings on each individual school starting with item four.
All right. Item number four, is there any staff report to go with that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number four is an application to rezone the USD number 305 administrative offices located at 1511 Gypson Avenue. And this site contains 1.65 acres presently and there's a little bit of history to that. 1994, the Solana Board of Education offices were actually located in this building in the east wing as you walk in from the east side on, on the basement floor. And with the recent closure of Glenifer Hill Elementary School, they proposed relocating their administrative offices over to that building, relocating their data processing functions. And they also planned to hold their school board meetings in the remodeled facility in the former cafeteria gymnasium building. And the plan submitted by the school's architect called for construction of 33 additional off-street parking spaces to accommodate staff and visitors. These are mostly on the west side of the building. They also did a lot of internal conversions and converted children's restrooms to adult restrooms for the given population that was there. Glenifer Hill Elementary was constructed in 1953 and at the time it was constructed, schools were permitted use in residential zones, so they attempted or attained a building permit and constructed the school. What was run into in 1994, however, was that administrative offices were not a permitted or conditional use in the residential district and we did not have a public use zoning district at the time. If we had had a public use zoning district, there wouldn't have been any zoning action needed to go from an elementary school to USD 305 offices. There was no commercial zoning in the immediate vicinity, so staff felt like an application for creation of an individual planned development district was the most appropriate tool. And essentially what the planned development district did was create a public use district for the Glenifer Hill school. And the specific uses were approved were that use of the property be limited to administrative offices, meeting rooms, learning laboratories, classrooms, and other accessory uses necessary to carry out USD number 305's educational mission, which is essentially what the educational facilities sub-district is, is attempting to do in the public use district. And the, the planning commission found that the site was suitable for redevelopment of school district offices. It would be a logical extension and continued use of the site for public education purposes that would not harm the surrounding area because the architectural appearance and size would remain unchanged. There would be no increased demand for public facilities or services and the public use was in conformance with the comprehensive plan, which showed that as a public use area. City Commission concurred with that and as they relocated over there in 1995 and have been located there since that time. Shortly after the planned development district, there was an identified need for additional neighborhood playground space in the area and Solana Parks and Recreation and USD 305 entered into a partnership to develop the lower playground area into a neighborhood park. And we would note, noted there on page three, that there was, that was first a lease, first an informal agreement and then a lease of the space by the city and then on August 20th, the city took title to the property and it was transferred in ownership. One of the ironies that we point out in our staff report is that the planned development district was created for USD 305 and their use of the property and did not anticipate any separate park use. And now that we have a separate ownership, our recommendation that should the planned development district be repealed as no longer relevant or needed, that the follow-up action would be for the, the city portion to be rezoned to public use, public facilities, which would be reflective of its neighborhood park use. But what we're focused on here today is a potential change in zoning classification from planned development district to public use. And what the primary change in status of that would be is that today, as a planned development district, you would, and there were major changes to the site plan such as an expansion of the building, a relocation of parking or those things, then USD 305 would have to file an amendment to their planned development district and that would be reviewed by the Planning Commission. If this request to make it a permitted use was approved, then that planned development district would be repealed and they would have the freedom to add, add parking or do other things to the property without a formal amendment of the planned development district as long as it conformed with zoning requirements. The other thing we would point out is that the comprehensive plan shows this property as public or quasi-public and a change to public use zoning would be consistent with the current use of the property and with the comprehensive plan. Nevertheless, it's our recommendation that you take any public input that the public would have about a potential change here and that you continue the public hearing on the USD 305 administrative offices to December 4th to allow corrective text amendment to be considered by the Planning Commission and City Commission prior to making any recommendation on this change. So the format for each of these will be to allow the commission to address any specific questions about the property or the history of the property that you have, hear from any interested members of the public. Then our recommendation is that the hearing on this item be closed and the hearing continued over to December 4th, 2012.
Any questions of the staff? Would we like to hear from USD 305? They have any input on this particular location?
We have the letter from the school board that says they would like this property included for consideration in the new public use district and that should stand. That's their official position.
Okay. Thank you. If there being no other comments, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone that wants to comment on this site and this application? Please come up and we'd like to hear your remarks for the record. And keep in mind, we want to keep our, the remarks remain to, to this particular location and, and this application.
I understand the process. Actually, wanted to thank you. We had our first, well, second time. First time as you a chairperson and congratulations, I guess you were, you got it again. Like, I was reading through minutes. I mean, I'm definitely becoming more informed as I read more and more and, I mean, as you've been presenting in your citizens' concerns packet that's, you know, public, I thank you for making the choices. I also like to thank you for considering to hear mine. If you've noticed, if anybody else is here, that I'm 21, so I should technically be last. I do appreciate taking into account the possibility, me being able to continue my job if, if I had, hadn't moved my students. So keep it short. My name is Christopher Hernandez, 1503 Stapler Avenue. You can look at the map and you can see my house is. You can look at the map, and you can see my house is, Ms. Rager, can you point to it? Thank you. I'm sorry. I got there. Okay, Ms. Rager. Yep, that's mine. So I'm right across from what has been rezoned per the land exchange that occurred, I believe, from the date, August 20th. All I have attached, you have in the citizen's concerns packet, an item eight, basically just saying that I have an informal protest that was created during the Z-12-2, and that was because I did a lot of, honestly, a lot of the legwork canvassing with, and talking to the public to find out what they wanted. The reality is, I've included the names. They would, what they want represented, since they couldn't actually attend the hearing, and some of them, that's what they said, I work at night, or I can't do it for this reason. They had statements that they had in. I have names and addresses on item number nine. Ones that are starred are just ones that are already a part of the actual public owners. You know, given that while this is going to be carried over to, I believe, excuse me, December 4th, your hearing public comment, is, these are the comments that were originally made when the application started, after speaking with the city clerk, Ms. Elsie, and discussing with Mr. Hirsch and Mr. Schrag. Basically, they said if I kind of created a cover letter to help explain, so, one, not to go out and have to thing indoors again for this one, and we're going to have another one later, that it'd just be outlined. So it has names, addresses, you can see who rents, who owns.
Chris, I think we've got all the information, and I just want to get to the new stuff. So if you've got something new, let's go right to it, because there's a number of items here, okay?
I gave you that information, that's fine. I guess what I want to know is, since this is a matter of public record, since those aren't in attendance, when I go back to them to speak to them, will their name and address be included as individuals?
Whatever we have in the record is in the record, so just assume that if you've submitted it, we've got it.
Okay, so then I can tell that those individuals-
And they can certainly come to, could have come to this public hearing today, they can come to the subsequent one.
I guess my, okay. Just, I'm sorry, I'm just asking for clarification, so I explain to them that they have, as I come in and say my name and address, it's basically, they are saying their name and address and their comments. So that's considered a part of the public record, even though they're not here at this hearing. Is that correct? Yes or no?
I'm not here to answer questions. This is not a yes or no session.
Okay.
But if they have opportunity, and they'll get notice, and they could come and speak to the commission. If I were you, I wouldn't put myself in the position of being a conduit for them or spokesperson for them. I think they will need to, they will need to come and represent themselves. But if they're on a valid position, something that spates their opinion, we'll be glad to have it, if we don't have it already. So please, new items, or I'll ask you to-
No, I'm sorry.
I'll ask you to finish up, unless you have new information for us.
Basically, the, no, I'll wait till you have, go to Z-12-8. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you participating in the process.
Just want to make sure everybody understands that the primary change between this and the original application is that the original application, the school district owned the entire parcel, and the entire parcel was up for consideration, and all we're talking about is what's outlined in blue there, which is what is still owned by USD 305, with the remaining owned by the city of Solana.
Well, and as chairman person, Ryan already says, you have the letter in front of you. Those people, I still consider the hill a part of the park.
Could I ask a question? I wish that instead of fussing about procedure and representation, are there, what we're really here to talk about is land use and land use compatibility. The only thing I see in your notes here are people saying that they fear the loss of the park. It should be perfectly clear now that if we proceed by our alternative number one, as explained, all we're talking about is the school district administration building, and that the park will temporarily become a non-conforming pre-existing use if this zoning goes through, because it is part of a PDD, and it is in current land use as a park. It will remain in land use as a park, and the way to protect that is an additional application at a later time to have that park placed into the new public use zone as a park. And am I correct on that, and is that what your real objection is? Because you haven't actually said-
The only real objection is in the paragraph one of item eight, and it's the last sentence, which is kind of a long sentence. So Mr. Ryan already said that you guys have it, so I didn't know if you had had an opportunity to read it, so you're asking about it. I'm saying that the people that I spoke with, and you're talking about the park, they consider the hill a part of the park. When it becomes winter, whenever that is, because it keeps changing, ultimately, they consider that, citizens from far away, that are not 200 feet away, come, even some of those signatures are further away than that 200 feet. So that's what they are thinking is still part of the park, is the hill that's being lost. That has been lost to rezoning.
The hill is not being lost to rezoning. You're playing on it as public school property. It will still be public school property, and you can still play on that hill every time it snows.
But they do make, Mr. Andrew made a point that there could be, it was just more of an example, that he, with a condition, they would require conditional use if they wanted to add parking. And that doesn't mean that that parking is going to go where the hill is. But with what you're saying of changing the land use, being a permitted use, they could do the construction of the parking. That's what the public is concerned about.
Except they already have done all the parking they could possibly do there. I mean, unless they build a retaining wall and make it vertical, but that wouldn't gain enough additional land to put more parking space in there, so the point of additional parking in this case is pretty much null.
Okay. Well, I would, I would rather sense to know that. Thank you.
Are we done?
Done, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone, anyone else in the public that wants to speak for this item?
If the correct course of action would be to close the public hearing on this particular item and entertain a motion to continue the hearing on item four to December 4th, 2012.
So we will close the public portion of this hearing, and unless there's further discussion, the chair will hear a motion.
You had a motion here, I saw moved.
In a second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four passes, and it will be recorded as unanimous. Application number five, Z-12-8, requesting the rezoning of South High School campus. Staff on that?
Thank you. This is application Z-12-8, and this involves a request to rezone the South High School campus from R1 single-family to the public use educational facilities district. It's just more of an interesting item to, as to figure out why, but for, not only was there no conditional use permit approved by the city of Solana for South High, there was no building permit approved by the city of Solana for South High, as it was built in Saline County and then later annexed into the city. But it was constructed in 1969, and the school became a permitted use upon its annexation into the city. Because it predated 1977, it is a permitted use as long as it does not expand beyond its original boundaries. There was a gymnasium addition constructed in 1979. In 1996, there were two new softball diamonds with dugouts built along Magnolia Road. There was no notice to neighboring property owners, no public hearings involved in those because the high school was considered to be a permitted use. In 2002, as part of the $100 million bond issue, there was a $10 million renovation to South High, and involved changes to the school auditorium and commons area. There was construction of 66, or 67,000 square feet of additional space. And again, those were all done administratively through building permits. There was no public hearings and no public notice involved in that. So if there was a change in zoning classification from R1 to public use, it would not change the current status of South High as far as being a permitted use. The only change would be that in the future, public use zoning rules would apply to their projects instead of R1 single-family rules. And again, a zoning change to public facilities would be more in conformance with the comprehensive plan, which shows this as a public or quasi-public use. And that was done in anticipation of this continuing to be a high school facility. Again, our recommendation on this would be to open the public hearing for any questions you have of staff, for public comment, to close the hearing, and to continue the public hearing on South High School to December 4th, 2012.
Questions of staff? Comments from USD 305? Would the public like to comment on this item? We'll open the item for public comment. Yes, sir. And I remind you again, remain to this specific campus and application, and I'm looking for things like signage or parking and things like that. Physical.
Yes, sir. All I'm doing is, I should speed things up for you. Like you said, I guess you call it conduit. I call it representative. I've, from the Z-12-2, went around to different schools at the original time, and also from the block party held September 29th.
This is for South High School?
I'm basically just trying to speed things up for you guys, so you don't have to hear me anymore. So I have a list of, I'm basically just saying, I can go, come up every single time, if you'd like, or I could just give you the one sheet. I could ask permission to give you the one sheet, so you have it as record of the people that want it to be heard, that could not be here for the hearing.
Dean, do we have that item? Is this a new item, or do we have that?
This would be an item that I was not able to include because include the block party, and the old one wasn't-
You do not have that at your places. So this would be something that would be introduced today.
I would say you submit that to the planning staff.
Again, one of the advantages of continuing the public hearing over to December 4th is that if they're submitted to us, then we can duplicate it and make sure that you have it for that hearing.
Is that acceptable? Okay.
No, not a problem. I'll let them know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on South High School? There being none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion on this item number five?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, item number five, Z-12-8, we move to the December 4th, or continue to the December 4th, 2012 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number six, application Z-12-9, requesting the rezoning for Central High School campus.
And again, the reason it's important to have the individual public hearings is just to get these facts entered into the record as to the current status of this school property. And the former Central High School was constructed in 1950. When it was constructed, it was Solana High School. It did not become Central High until South High was built and opened. The Solana Stadium on the Central High grounds was constructed in 1965. No conditional use permit was applied for or approved for the school or for the athletic stadium. As a pre-1977 school, it was considered to be a permitted use. There were additions constructed to Central High in 1960, 1988, and 1991. There was no notice to neighboring property owners, and no public hearings were required in regard to those additions. In 2001, over $10 million in improvements were made to the Central High School building, and approximately 67,000 square feet of additional space was added. And as recently as 2007, a 12,000-square-foot locker room and a fitness addition was constructed on the east side of the high school, and new tennis courts were constructed north of the stadium. And again, because Central High was a pre-1977 permitted use, these improvements took place without any public notice or public hearings before the planning commission in regard to those improvements. So in terms of the nature of this request, the current zoning status of Central High School is it's a permitted use under its R1 designation. If this zoning change were approved, it would continue to be a permitted use, but you would have public use regulations applied to future building projects instead of residential regulations. The comprehensive plan also designates this as a public use property in anticipation of its continued use as a high school facility and athletic facility. So our recommendation on this would be to open the public hearing to any questions you have of staff, to public comment, and to close the public hearing, and to continue the public hearing on Central High School to the December 4th, 2012 meeting.
Questions for the staff? Any comments from USD 305? I'll open the podium to the public. Anyone else that would, anyone that would like to comment on the central application? There being none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion on this item?
Since we're close to Central High School, I would move to accept the staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item carries unanimously. Application Z-12-10, requesting rezoning of South Middle School. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a similar application to the previous two, in that South High School was constructed in 1957. At the time it was built in 1957, schools were a permitted use in residential districts. In 1977, there was a prospective change that put new schools into the conditional use category, but the permitted use classification remained for South Middle School because it was already in existence at that time. There were additions constructed in 1963, 1981, 1988, and on two different occasions, because of crowding issues, there were mobile classrooms moved on to the site. There was no notice to neighboring property owners, no public hearings were required in regard to these school additions. Again, as part of the bond issue approved by voters, there were $11 million in renovations done to the South Middle School campus in 2001. This included adding 74,000 square feet of space, adding apparent drop-off area at the northeast corner of the school, and additional paved parking south of the school building. Again, because this was a pre-1977 permitted use, there were no public notices or public hearings in regard to these school improvements. So this is a proposed change from R1 to public use, and it would not change the current status of South Middle School, which is permitted today and would be permitted under the public use category, but would be subject to public use rules instead of residential rules if this change were approved. The comprehensive plan shows this as a public use property in anticipation of its continued use as a middle school facility, and our recommendation would be to receive any public questions or comments to close the hearing and continue the public hearing to December 4th on South Middle School.
Questions to staff? Comments from the USD 305? I'll open the public forum. Are there any comments on this item? There being none, I'll close the public forum. Gentlemen, as, I'll bring this back to the commission. Is there a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we move application Z-12-10 to the December 4th, 2012 continuation.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item carries unanimously. Number nine, application Z-12-12, rezoning of Coronado Elementary School. Staff report?
Are you sure we're not, did you skip one? Skip Lakewood?
I did skip Lakewood, and I apologize. It's Z-12-11.
We don't want to overlook Lakewood.
No, no, we don't. And at the size of this syllabus, if you get out of order, you could be completely lost.
Lakewood Middle School is a different matter, because Lakewood Middle School was constructed after 1977. So it was the year 2000 as part of the bond issue that was previously discussed. USD number 305 purchased 39.5 acres west of Lakewood Park to serve as a site for a new middle school to replace Roosevelt Lincoln on Mulberry. This property was already platted and zoned, but it was not in a configuration that would accommodate the creation of a new middle school. Because the city did not have a public use district, a rezoning application was filed by USD number 305, and this was an interesting one for the Planning Commission because the site that they purchased was zoned I-2, C-5, C-2, R-3, R-2.5, and R-2. And so an application was filed to rezone the property to a uniform R-3 district because public use classification was not available at that time. And the primary reason for that was that the I-2, C-5, and C-2 districts didn't allow public schools, and since schools were conditional residential districts and lacking in a public use district, staff felt that R-3 would provide the school district and its architect with a set of uniform setback lock coverage height regulations to apply to the building project. R-3 is the most intense residential district. So first of all, there was a public hearing that the Planning Commission held to consider whether this property should be rezoned, and the Planning Commission recommended that the property be rezoned to a uniform R-3 classification, and we've highlighted the reasons for that, what the Planning Commission gave on page two of your report. The City Commission concurred with that. Also, on April 18th, the Planning Commission considered a companion application for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a new middle school on the site, and that was also approved by the Planning Commission, subject to the City Commission endorsement and ratification of the zoning change to R-3 taking effect, and for plans related to water extensions, sewer lines, and drainage improvements being approved by the city engineer before there was a building permit. One thing we would note there on page three is that development, one of the requirements is that development shall conform with the approved site plan, including building elevations, landscape plan, and drainage plan. So one of the aspects of a conditional use permit is it's somewhat like a planned development district, or what you see is what you get zoning. So if there was a zoning change on this property from R-3 to public use, the change would be that Lakewood Middle School would go from being an approved conditional use, subject to conditional use permit amendments being required, to a permitted use. And I think we had the analogy that if Lakewood Middle School wanted to construct a greenhouse or some sort of athletic storage building or something today, they would need to amend their conditional use permit site plan. To do that, if this change were approved and they wanted to add a greenhouse or an athletic storage building, that would be allowed as a permitted use as long as it conformed with all the zoning requirements. So in this particular instance, the difference between Lakewood and South Middle School is that Lakewood is under a conditional use permit today, and if this change were approved, then it would become a permitted use, so that would be a change of its current status. Our recommendation would be to open the public hearing for any public comment, and then to close the hearing, and to continue the hearing on Lakewood Middle School to December 4th, 2012.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Comments from USD 305? I'll open the public forum. Are there anyone that would like to comment on this application? There being none, I'll close the public forum and bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion on this item?
I would move that the public hearing for application Z-12-11 Lakewood School be continued to the regular meeting in December 4th, 2012 of our Planning Commission.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item is unanimous. Item number nine, application Z-12-12 requesting the rezoning of Coronado Elementary School. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Coronado Elementary School is a pre-1977 elementary school. It was constructed in 1963. It was a permitted use at that time and has remained a permitted use since its original construction. There were additions to Coronado constructed in 1975, 1979, and 1987. There was no notice to neighboring property owners. There were no public hearings required or held regarding those additions. In 2000, as part of the bond issue, there were $4 million in improvements made to Coronado School. This included 37,000 square feet of additional space, a drop-off area added along Neal Avenue, and staff and visitor parking constructed along Ray Avenue. Because Coronado School was a pre-1977 permitted use, all these improvements took place without any public notice or any public hearings regarding those. So in terms of the nature of this request, to go from R1 single-family to public use, the current permitted use status of Coronado would not change. It's a permitted use today. It would be a permitted use under the public use zoning, but the public use rules would apply instead of R1 single-family zoning rules. Comprehensive plan shows this as a public use on the future land use plan, again done in anticipation of its continuing to be used as an elementary school. So our recommendation would be to open the public hearing to any comments or questions, to close the hearing, and continue the hearing on Coronado School to December 4th, 2012.
Questions of staff? Comments from USD 305? I'll open the public forum. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? There being none, we'll close the public portion, bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we move Z-12-12 to December 4th, public hearing, application to December 4th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item is unanimous. Thank you. Number 10, application Z-12-13 requesting the rezoning of Cottonwood Elementary School. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a post-1977 school. This is a newer school that was constructed as part of the bond issue approved by voters in 1999. And what happened was in 2000, USD 305 filed an application for approval of a conditional use permit to construct a new elementary school on the south side of enrollment between Baker and Phillips. And the block that was proposed was immediately north of what was existing as Whittier School in that location. And the block was cleared of 18 homes to create a building site for the new school. The new school covers about 62,000 square feet today. It was designed to serve 450 students. Back at the time, Whittier School remained in place while Cottonwood was built, and then after Cottonwood was built, it remained in place a little longer, and the students from Sunset were moved to Whittier while work was done at Sunset School. And then when they moved back to Sunset, Whittier School was demolished. So Whittier School was located right here, and that is now playground area. So that, a conditional use was required at the time because a new school was being proposed on a residential land that was not previously used for school purposes. This Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on February 15th, 2000, and the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to approve the school district's application, and we summarized that for you on page two of your report. And again, one of the conditions of approval was that development of the site substantially conformed with the approved site plan, including building elevation, sidewalk plan, and landscape plan. So this is a proposed change from R-2 to public use educational facilities. This zoning change would change the status of Cottonwood School from an approved conditional use to a permitted use, and the result of this change in status would be that you would no longer need a conditional use permit amendment to add a building or make modifications to the site, such as adding additional staff parking. The comprehensive plan identifies Cottonwood School as a future public use based on its continuing use as an elementary school, and our recommendation would be to open the public hearing on Cottonwood School for comments and questions to close the hearing and continue the hearing to December 4th, 2012.
Comments to staff? USD 305? I'll open the public forum. Is there any comments on this application from the public? There being none, I'll close the public forum on this item, bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move application Z-12-13 to the December 4th, 2012 meeting for continuance.
Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Application Z-12-14 requesting the rezone of Husener Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Husener Elementary, which is located on Norton Street, just to the west of Roach Street and between there and Quincy, was constructed back in 1949, and no conditional use permit was applied for or approved at that time because schools were permitted use in residential zoning districts at that time. There were additions constructed in 1953, 1956, 1991, and 1994, and as a pre-1977 permitted use, there were no notice to neighboring property owners and no public hearings required or held regarding those additions. Again, as part of the $100 million bond issue, there were approximately $3 million in improvements made to Husener in 2000. This involved construction of 20,000 square feet of additional space, a new drop-off area along Norton, and staff and visitor parking along Minneapolis Avenue. There was no public hearings or Planning Commission action involved in these improvements. They were, Husener was and is classified as a permitted use, and the zoning change being considered to public use would not change the current status of Husener School, which is a permitted use today and would be under the prospective zoning change. The only change would be that public use zoning rules would apply instead of the current single-family zoning rules. Comprehensive plan identifies Husener as a future public use on the land use plan, and our recommendation would be to open the public hearing on Husener School, receive any comments or questions, close the hearing, and continue the hearing on Husener School to December 4th, 2012.
Comments to staff? USD 305? I'll open the public portion. Are there any comments from the public on the Husener application? There being none, I'll close the public portion. Is there a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we move application Z-12-14 to December 4th, 2012. Close hearing today.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Item 12, application Z-12-15, Metalark Ridge Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application is a little bit different than any of the others in that we're talking about two non-contiguous properties. We have the original Metalark Elementary School, which was built in 1962 at the southwest corner of Fairdale Road and Glen Avenue. It was a permitted use at the time of its construction in 1962 and has remained classified as a permitted use. There were additions to Metalark constructed in 1973, 1980, 1987, and 1994. There was no notice to neighboring property owners or public hearings held in regard to those additions. In 2000, there were approximately $4 million in improvements made to Metalark School, including 32,000 square feet of additional school space. The Glen Avenue area, there was not a pull-off area there, but enhancements made to improve Glen Avenue as a drop-off area, staff and visitor parking along Beechwood Road, and so because it was a pre-1977 school, there was no notice or public hearing on these changes. However, there was a notice and a public hearing held on the school district's plan for constructing a new parking area on the north side of Glen, and this area over here was formerly platted and zoned for single-family residences. There's a cul-de-sac here that's platted and unbuilt, and there's an oil well right in the middle of the cul-de-sac, which prevents the street from being built, and it is an active oil well at this time. What the school district did was they replatted the property into one large 3.2-acre lot, and there was an application filed for a conditional use permit to allow the construction of this parking area here that contained 45 spaces. Oddly enough, as part of that replat, if some of you have a long memory, you'll remember that there were tennis courts on this spot right here, and the school district platted that as a separate lot. It was sold off. The tennis courts were removed, and a home was built there after the tennis courts were removed. But this property here is identified as it's owned in its entirety by USD 305. And the plan at the time was to construct 45 parking spaces there with the remainder of the site either used as supplemental playground area for Metalark School, but also it kind of serves as a play area for the surrounding neighborhood. We don't have, I don't have all the details, but there's been, and maybe Mr. Baxton knows a lot better, but there was a little nature area here that was carved out as part of the school site, and there were some cooperative programs between the City of Salina and School District in regards to that nature area. But the primary distinction is that everything that is on this block here is zoned R, and it is, the status there is that the school is a permitted use, and this area up here is subject to a conditional use permit that was approved in the year 2000. You have at your places there a protest comment received from Mr. Darrell Shuts, who resides at 153 West Hillside Terrace, and he is opposed to the change, not as to the school here, but believes that the conditional use permit should remain in place here. So he is concerned that the ability to construct parking or other things closer to the housing area, which was not contemplated in the year 2000, could be changed. So in terms of the nature of this request, this would not change the current status of Metalark School, which is a permitted use today. If this were included in the public use district, then that would no longer be subject to a conditional use permit amendment if there were changes to how that site were used. So this, as you look at this on December 4th, we'll try to further spell out the distinctions between south of Glen and north of Glen. distinctions between south of Glen and north of Glen. They occurred at different times and under different circumstances. And a change to public use would have different implications for those two sides. But at present, our recommendation would be to open the public hearing to any comments or questions, to close the hearing, and continue the hearing on Metalark School and the Metalark School parking area to December fourth, two thousand twelve.
Questions to staff?
And again, Mr. Schultz cannot be here, so I presented the information that he gave me, that he would like to see the conditional use permit remain in place on the north portion.
Not necessarily a question, but it would be nice to have, two oh five, have additional information on that north side, because I do kind of agree with that, that it is different from the actual location where the school is located and approximately the other homes. I know what is their plans for that, for it not to be part of a conditional use permit process. So I'm just making that out there. It'd be nice for three oh five to give us some indication of what their plans are for that.
And Mr. Kennedy was not employed by the district at that time when the conditional use permit was put forward, but I will, at the December fourth meeting, I'll provide him and the planning commission with additional details about what the planning commission saw in two thousand for that, because it is a three-point-two-acre site.
Just because it has ownership of USD three oh five doesn't mean it has to be rezoned.
Correct. That, you are, you are perfectly within your rights to treat the two sides differently, which is why we're pointing out the distinction.
Comment from three oh five? On this item? Okay. There being none, we'll open the public forum on this item. Anyone that wishes to address the public on the Metalark Ridge application? There being none, I'll close the public forum. We'll bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion on this item?
I move that we close the public hearing on Z twelve fifteen. reopen again December fourth.
Second. And what is the motion? Is it to approve and move this to the December fourth agenda?
Continue the hearing.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Application Z twelve sixteen requesting the rezoning of Oakdale Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, again, a little bit different item in that although Oakdale School was constructed originally in nineteen thirty and was a permitted use at that time, it occupied a much smaller footprint than it does today. The original building was constructed in phases in nineteen thirty and nineteen thirty-two. Then in nineteen sixty-four, there was a five-thousand-square-foot kitchen and lunchroom addition on the east side of the building. In December of nineteen ninety-nine, USD three oh five proposed a major renovation and expansion of both the Oakdale School building and the school grounds. And as part of that expansion plan, a one-story addition put on the building in nineteen sixty-four, and mobile classrooms were to be removed and replaced by a two-story addition. That addition increased the size of the building to thirty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-one square feet, again realizing that it is a two-story building, while most of our other schools are one-story. As part of this, they were building over the existing right-of-way for Columbia Avenue, so a replat application was also filed that addressed the vacation of Columbia Avenue and conversion of that to school property. And because we were talking about a major expansion of the school grounds, a conditional use permit was required because they were expanding on a residential property that was not historically used for school purposes. Second aspect of that property that you can see if you drive by there was major improvements involving parking and circulation on the west side, on the Penn Avenue side, that there was bus drop-off areas created and additional parent drop-off areas on the north side to remedy a lot of the congestion that was occurring on the street. And part of that was with the closure of Hawthorne School, the enrollment area for Hawthorne was moved to Oakdale School, and there was quite a bit of busing activity to Oakdale. So they have this bus drop-off area on this side and then additional parent drop-off on the north side. And then there was a major shifting of the playground over there to the east side of the school grounds. The school district purchased all the property in Block Two over here. That block was cleared of houses, and a chain-link fence was put up, and that became playground area for Oakdale School. That plan came before the planning commission at a public hearing on January eighteenth, two thousand. The planning commission voted six to zero to approve the school district's application. And again, one of the items we note there was development of the site, so substantially conformed with the approved site plan, proposed building elevations, landscape plan, and paving plan. So somewhat similar to the Lakewood School and Cottonwood School, if a zoning change were approved, in this instance, the current status of Oakdale School would move from an approved conditional use to a permitted use. And the result would be that instead of requiring a conditional use permit amendment to make changes to the site, such as adding parking or constructing satellite buildings, if this change were approved, those would be allowed as permitted uses, provided they met with the public use district regulations. So again, the comprehensive plan identifies this as a public use in the future land use plan. And our recommendation would be to continue the public hearing on Oakdale School to December fourth, two thousand twelve.
Comments to staff? Any comments from USD three oh five? I'll open the public portion. Forum is open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item? There being none, I'll close the public forum. Bring this back to the commission. Is there a motion on this application?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the public hearing on application Z twelve dash sixteen be continued to the regular meeting of December fourth.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That application passes unanimously. Number fourteen, application seven twelve dash seventeen, Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those of you who like trivia contests, you should know that Schilling Elementary School was built by the federal government and not by USD three oh five. It was built by the airport, Air Force as part of the service to the air base housing out in that area in nineteen fifty-nine. It was purchased by USD three oh five in nineteen seventy as a pre-nineteen seventy-seven school. It is a permitted use. And there were additions constructed in nineteen sixty and nineteen sixty-three. And again, there was no notice to neighboring property owners required and no public hearings held regarding those additions. At the time that the school was purchased by USD three oh five, it contained thirty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-three square feet, had twenty-three classrooms and a kindergarten room and library. In two thousand, there were about four million dollars in improvements made to the school, including construction of additional space, apparent drop-off area along Canterbury, and additional staff and visitor parking north of the building. Again, Schilling School is a pre-nineteen seventy-seven school, so there was no public notice or public hearings held on the two thousand improvements. Today, Schilling School is a permitted use in its current configuration. If this zoning change were be approved, there would be no change in status. It would remain as a permitted use, except you'd have permitted, you'd have the public use rules and regulations apply instead of single-family residential regulations. Comprehensive plan identifies this as a public use on the future land use plan. And our recommendation would be to receive any public comment or questions, close the hearing, and continue the public hearing on Schilling School to December fourth, two thousand twelve.
Comments to staff? Comments from USD three oh five? I'll open the public portion of this application. Is there anyone that would like to comment on Schilling Elementary? There being none, I'll close the public forum. Bring this back to the commission. Is there a motion on this application, please?
I'd make a motion that we close application Z twelve eighteen and move it forward to the December fourth commission meeting.
I'll second that.
Seventeen or eighteen?
It's seventeen, isn't it?
Yeah, it's seventeen.
His motion was eighteen.
Yeah, it's seventeen.
Z twelve seventeen is Schilling School with Stewart being.
I already flipped past it to the next one. Amazing.
First and the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventeen passes unanimously. Number, item number fifteen, application seven twelve eighteen, Stewart Elementary School.
We're now talking about Stewart Elementary School, which if you're familiar with, it's located on Roach Street just north of Belmont Boulevard. It was originally constructed in nineteen fifty-nine. There's no conditional use permit applied for approved at that time because schools were a permitted use in our residential zoning districts at that time. There were some additions constructed in nineteen sixty-one and nineteen sixty-three, and again in nineteen ninety-two. There was no notice to neighboring property owners and no public hearings were required or held regarding those additions. As part of the school bond issue, there were about four million dollars in improvements made to Stewart School, including additional classroom space, apparent drop-off area along Roach Street, and new staff and visitor parking along Wayne Avenue. Because Stewart School was a pre-nineteen seventy-seven permitted use, these improvements all took place without any public notice or public hearings in regard to the proposed improvements. Today, Stewart School is a permitted use in its R1 status, and if this zoning change or zoning classification were changed, the only change would be that any improvements would be subject to public use rules instead of residential rules. Again, Stewart is identified as a public use on the future land use plan and the comprehensive plan, and our recommendation would be to hear any public input on Stewart School, close the public hearing, and continue that public hearing to December fourth, two thousand twelve.
Comments to staff? Comments from USD three oh five? I'll open the public forum. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this application? There being none, I'll close the public forum. Bring this back to the commission. Is there a motion on this application? I'll make the motion to close the public hearing and continue to December fourth, two thousand twelve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Number sixteen, application Z twelve dash nineteen, Sunset Elementary School.
This is an application to rezone Sunset Elementary School from R1 single-family to public use educational facilities. Sunset Elementary was constructed in nineteen fifty-three on West Republic, and it was a permitted use at the time of its construction and remains a permitted use today. There were additions constructed in nineteen fifty-four, nineteen fifty-nine, and nineteen ninety-one. There was no notice to neighboring property owners and no public hearings were required or held regarding those additions, nor were there hearings required or held in regard to the two thousand improvements, which included additional classroom space, apparent drop-off area along Republic Avenue, and staff and visitor parking along Pueblo Avenue. Because Sunset School, again, was a pre-nineteen seventy-seven school, there was no notice or public hearing requirements in place. If this zoning change were approved, there would be no change in zoning status because it's a permitted use today, would continue to be a permitted use, but we would have different zoning regulations that would apply to future projects instead of single-family residential that we have today. The comprehensive plan identifies this as a public use in the future land use plan. And our recommendation would be to hear any comments or questions regarding the status of Sunset School, to close the hearing, and to continue the hearing on Sunset School to December fourth, two thousand twelve.
Comments to staff? Comment from USD three oh five? We'll open the public forum. Are there anyone, is there anyone that wants to address this item, Sunset? There being none, we'll bring it, close the public forum, bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion on this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve, or I'm sorry, close the hearing, public hearing on application Z twelve dash nineteen and continue on December fourth, two thousand twelve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Number seventeen, application Z twelve dash twenty, requesting Heartland Early Education.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, this facility is known as the Heartland Early Education Center. It houses the Head Start programs and other early education programs sponsored by USD three oh five. It was originally built in nineteen sixty-two as Kennedy Elementary School. And at the time it was built, it was a permitted use in the zoning district in which it was located, which is single-family residential. There were additions to Kennedy School constructed in nineteen seventy-nine and nineteen ninety-six. The school closed shortly after the nineteen ninety-six addition. There was no notice to neighboring owners and no public hearings were required or held regarding these additions. As I noted, following the last addition, the school was closed. USD three oh five moved their Head Start program and other early education programs into the facility. As part of that, in two thousand one, there was a million-dollar remodeling there, which involved a modest addition, along with construction of new conference rooms and classroom areas inside the school. Again, as Kennedy School was a pre-nineteen seventy-seven permitted use, there were no public hearings regarding any of these additions or improvements. Today, Heartland Early Education Center is a permitted use in its R1 zoning district. And if this zoning change were approved, it would continue to be a permitted use, but would be subject to different regulations than single-family residential. The comprehensive plan identifies this as a public use in the future land use plan. And our recommendation would be to hear comments or questions about Heartland, to close the public hearing, and to continue the public hearing on Heartland Early Education Center to December fourth, two thousand twelve.
Comments to staff? Comments from USD three oh five? I'll open the public forum. Are there any comments from the public? Being done, I'll bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the public hearing for application Z twelve dash twenty be continued to the December fourth regular meeting of the planning commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. I'd like to thank you all for your patience. I know this is quite a large agenda today. To the new commissioners, I mean, most of us on the commission have gone through most of this material during the course of the last year and a half. You guys got quite a read there in one big dose, and so my apologies to you. We'll hope that agendas can be shorter in the future. And to Trent and Justin, if you want to, you probably got enough information now to be principal at any school in the district, so you don't talk to Ken about your options. You're ahead of the game. Other matters?
Before we go to other matters, we still need to initiate, on behalf of the planning commission, a motion from you to initiate a corrective text amendment to the text of the public use educational facilities text, and to advertise that public hearing for a November. a November 6th, 2012 Planning Commission public hearing. So you've opened and closed your hearings on the quasi-dudicial remapping part. This would be the legislative part, and so we need a motion from the Planning Commission to initiate a corrective text amendment to the educational facility district language and to hold a public hearing on that corrective text amendment on November 6th, 2012.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other comments from staff? Other matters?
We will have a meeting on October 16th. As part of that, we'll have the application to amend the conditional use permit for the tattoo shop on East Iron. And we may also try to arrange a steady session for you prior to that October 16th meeting, and we promise you a much shorter agenda on the 16th.
Chair, I have a question as well. What's that?
I want to prolong the meeting a little bit. May I? Go ahead. Just a quick question. I think a couple of meetings ago, or three, we established a timeline for the auto mechanic shop on North Santa Fe to come into compliance. And I believe this was the timeline that it was established at.
It appears that they have either radically cleaned up or left business.
That's the purpose of my question.
They have left that location. They no longer have a lease with Mr. Peterson, the owner of that, and has purchased the, or are leasing the assets of Pat's Auto Body across the street. So if you walk out the east entrance, you will see across the street on Seventh Street, Smokey's Auto Body's new location on North Seventh, directly across from the east entrance to the City County Building. So they have abandoned the Santa Fe site.
Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to just comment briefly that I noticed that at least my microphone is greatly improved from the last time. And I can actually be heard, even though I have some, and I don't have to strain for it. And so to whoever was responsible for that, I appreciate it. I did have one quick question. We have directions from Marsha Stevenson of Access TV right in front of there, not just for us, but for other commissioners who may not know exactly how to handle it. I was just curious about one thing. I'm assuming that this, the microphones and the additions were paid for by Access TV, but my question is, is it Access TV or the city that?
It is actually the building authority that is in charge of this room, and they're the ones responsible for the purchases related to the sound system. They got quite a bit of input from community access, but the purchases were made by the building authority for this building.
Well, relay thanks to the building authority, then.
I can't think of any other matters for you.